Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of April 16th. My name is Jim Leehan, to my left is my associate, Mr. Calcutt, and I would like to introduce everyone, our new Town Administrator, Blythe Robinson, who is joining us for our first Selectmen's meeting, one of many, I'm sure.
I hope so.
And Sue Jacobson, our Executive Assistant. We also have our Town Council with us this evening, Mr. DeLuca. I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped and is available on Norfolk Cable. Would you please all stand and join me for a Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We're going to immediately adjourn into Executive Session. The purpose of the Executive Session is to discuss a strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, the subject being run-and-gun police and fire union contracts. Before we do adjourn to that, I know a lot of you are here to talk about the run-and-gun issue. What goes on in the Executive Session is not open for public disclosure until they are released as part of the minutes, but Mr. DeLuca has agreed that when we return to public session that he will meet with you in a separate conference room and answer your questions and tell you where we are within the limitations of what he can, that is not within the privy of what's going, what's concerning ongoing litigation. So we'll do our best to answer your questions. So Dave has agreed to do that. We have an upstairs conference room available for that purpose and he will join you and answer your questions. I know you have asked for that opportunity, so we'll do that immediately upon returning from Executive Session. I don't anticipate Executive Session will run much more than 20 minutes, would be my guess. Is there about?
Yeah, and just to clarify.
Anything to that, Dave?
No, just to clarify that unfortunately it's not listed as an open session agenda item, so it would be inappropriate for the Board of Selectmen to address it in open session. So that's the reason for this alternate procedure.
But Dave would be the source of your answers anyway, so you're getting the right resource in terms of answering. If you have any short questions of that regard, in terms of process, I'd be glad to answer them.
Just a short question, yes, Mr. Leehan. When the residents wrote to the Board of Selectmen, we requested that we meet with the Board of Selectmen, not a Board of Selectmen meeting. So to find out now at the 11th hour that we've been denied that process is very disturbing.
Well, unfortunately, there are some portions of this that we cannot discuss. There are clear boundaries for us.
Correct.
And I'm not sure that we would satisfy any of your questions, because I think your questions, and you know we're all very familiar with the issue, are going to probably outside the privilege, the privilege of our responding to you. You had also mentioned that you wanted to visit with Council in your note. You specifically stated that, that you wanted to visit with Council.
The Board of Selectmen and Town Council.
To get clarification. So Dave has agreed to make that available to you, and he can answer anything we would be able to answer. There isn't anything outside of his capabilities that's within our capability. So if that doesn't satisfy you and there are questions that are outside the boundaries that don't fall within the privilege of Executive Session, we will schedule a meeting and have you right back in. There's no attempt to not participate in the process, just we know that we have limitations as to what we now can say or cannot say. We are in litigation.
Correct.
Okay, and so there are boundaries as to what we can and cannot say in this, and Dave is our guide in terms of where we can go with this. I don't know what else I can say. I mean, we're kind of in a rock and a hard spot.
We'll talk as a group and make a decision.
Well, do you want to take advantage of the opportunity to visit with Town Council?
Sure. All right, and schedule a meeting with the Board of Selectmen?
Well, let's decide that after you visit with Town Council.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
If he doesn't meet your needs and your questions are outside the boundaries of what we can answer, we need to know that too, because I don't want to frustrate you and have you come in and ask questions we can't answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to go into Executive Session?
So moved.
A roll call vote?
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. We will return hopefully in about 20 minutes. You may stay here, we're going to go to a different row.
How are you?
Met some nets.
That's amazing. It's always nice to see you.
I've developed a new allergy to the maples. Before, I had the oaks just to deal with, but this spring, we're plagued with maple allergy.
Mrs. Gleason, are we ready? Welcome back. We are now back in public session. Do I have a motion to go out of executive session?
So moved.
I will second. We'll call vote.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Leahan, aye. Do I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now back in public session. There were no votes taken during the executive session. We have a special guest with us this evening. Barbara Betholmew. And so, we're going to move her up in the agenda. And Barbara, as always, it's a pleasure to see you.
Yeah, just give them each one a packet.
Okay.
All right, Barbara, you have our full attention.
Okay. I wanted to, what shall we say? Tidy up the Fails Park situation. And therefore, I drew up a list of things that were pending. And first and foremost, on my mind, was clarification of the Fails Park road that's using part of the old, original access road to the private property. I had talked with Jack Hathaway many times before about the issue, and he had agreed with me and said he'd take care of it. But I never got a confirmation back from him that it had been dealt with. Until, most recently, and I was in communication with Mr. Franzak over some muddy ruts on the access road. And he made the point of the fact that the, he had discussed, he and Jack had discussed the issue, and they had agreed that Fails Park road ran from Main Street to the parking area where the park begins. And that from there on was the private access road. And the town would be responsible for, from Main Street to the parking area.
That's the little box, Barbara, on the left?
Right. And therefore, the rest of the road up beyond to the end of their property would be their responsibility, namely, the two owners of the property on the peninsula. So Jack had clarified it and defined it. So it's, in my mind, if you can check on it, I believe it's no longer of issue. But as I say, it was an open issue in my mind, and I wanted to be sure that it was closed up. Because it would be difficult, as we saw this spring, when the ruts arrived, the tenants, the two private owners are right there, you know? Do something, do something about the ruts. And I should have saved the pictures. I kind of chuckled, and Arthur sent me two photographs of the mud ruts on the road. And having grown up here in New England and lived in Norfolk all my life, I mean, I know what mud ruts are. And they're basically, they're up to your hubcaps. And that basically, what he was showing on the pictures were just mud tracks. And I thought, you know, city boys, we have living out there on the peninsula. Because I didn't see them, you know? It would slip and slide a little bit, but you certainly weren't going to get stuck. But anyway, the issue was dealt with by DPW and taking care of them. It's no longer of issue. So that takes care of item one.
Well, I want to just ask you, are we sure it takes care of item one?
All right.
Chuck, do you know anything about this road?
Maybe through down by your wall.
I mean, I know we all know where it is, but is it an accepted road?
No. It hasn't been an accepted, you named it Fails Park Road. And we defined it as, as Jack, as they have said, Jack defined it as such. But it's never been put forward as an accepted road.
So we don't own that road at this point in time?
Technically, no.
So this would have to go on the warrant for the town to approve acceptance of this road?
Are the property owners willing to?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure that, it may be resolved conceptually, but I don't think it's resolved legally.
Well, that was, that was the issue with my mind, whether, you know, it was finalized. Because I think it should be, more or less to protect the town, not only the park, but also the town. Otherwise, they're going to keep coming back and saying, you know, fix this and clean the brush and fill holes and what have you. And then ultimately, plow it. And I don't know if the town's ready to do that. You understand the background of this?
Yeah, no, I do, Barbara. Yeah, I know the background, and I know the owner, and I know about the conversation.
No, but I'm saying that the city, Quincy City Ice, sold those two lots, there were four actually originally, to raise money. And they created that right away in, over their property, for the land they were selling. Because they were getting in trouble financially.
I'm just thinking legally, having gone through. Mr. Calcutt and I have experienced recently some concerns over who owns what regarding town roads.
Do we know if they'd be willing to give us an easement to use that? It is possible, under state law, to do work on unaccepted roads and have a private property owner petition it, and you can budget a certain amount to spend on it. I'm not saying we want to do all that, I'm just saying it's possible. But I think we at least want to have some right to use it that's defined.
How are you?
Met some nets.
That's amazing. It's always nice to see you.
I've developed a new allergy to the maples. Before, I had the oaks just to deal with, but this spring, we're plagued with maple allergy.
Mrs. Gleason, are we ready? Welcome back. We are now back in public session. Do I have a motion to go out of executive session?
So moved.
I will second. We'll call vote.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Leahan, aye. Do I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now back in public session. There were no votes taken during the executive session. We have a special guest with us this evening. Barbara Betholmew. And so, we're going to move her up in the agenda. And Barbara, as always, it's a pleasure to see you.
What? Yeah, just give them each one a packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Barbara, you have our full attention.
Okay.
There you go.
I wanted to, what shall we say? Tidy up the Fails Park situation. And therefore, I drew up a list of things that were pending. And first and foremost, on my mind, was clarification of the Fails Park road that's using part of the old, original access road to the private property. I had talked with Jack Hathaway many times before about the issue, and he had agreed with me and said he'd take care of it. But I never got a confirmation back from him that it had been dealt with until most recently. And I was in communication with Mr. Franzak over some muddy ruts on the access road. And he made the point of the fact that he had discussed, he and Jack had discussed the issue, and they had agreed that Fails Park road ran from Main Street to the parking area where the park begins. And that from there on was the private access road. And the town would be responsible for Main Street to the parking area.
That's the little box, Barbara, on the left?
Right. And therefore, the rest of the road up beyond to the end of their property would be their responsibility, namely, the two owners of the property on the peninsula. So Jack had clarified it and defined it. So it's, in my mind, if you can check on it, I believe it's no longer of issue. But as I say, it was an open issue in my mind, and I wanted to be sure that it was closed up. Because it would be difficult, as we saw this spring, when the ruts arrived, the tenants, the two private owners are right there, you know? Do something, do something about the ruts. And I should have saved the pictures. I kind of chuckled, and Arthur sent me two photographs of the mud ruts on the road. And having grown up here in New England and lived in Norfolk all my life, I mean, I know what mud ruts are. And they're basically, they're up to your hubcaps. And that basically, what he was showing on the pictures were just mud tracks. And I thought, you know, city boys we have living out there on the peninsula. Because I didn't see them, you know? It would slip and slide a little bit, but you certainly weren't going to get stuck. But anyway, the issue was dealt with by DPW and taking care of them. It's no longer of issue. So that takes care of item one.
Well, I want to just ask you, are we sure it takes care of item one?
All right.
Chuck, do you know anything about this road? I mean, I know we all know where it is, but is it an accepted road?
No.
So...
It hasn't been an accepted, you named it Fails Park Road. And we defined it as, as they have said, Jack defined it as such. But it's never been put forward as an accepted road.
So we don't own that road at this point in time?
Technically, no.
So this would have to go on the warrant for the town to approve acceptance of this road?
Are the property owners willing to?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure that, it may be resolved conceptually, but I don't think it's resolved legally.
Well, that was the issue with my mind, whether, you know, it was finalized. Because I think it should be, more or less, to protect the town, not only the park, but also the town. Otherwise, they're going to keep coming back and saying, you know, fix this and clean the brush and fill holes and what have you. And then ultimately, plow it. And I don't know if the town's ready to do that. You understand the background of this?
Yeah, no, I do, Barbara. Yeah, I know the background, and I know the owner, and I know about the conversation.
No, but I'm saying that the city, Quincy City Ice, sold those two lots, there were four actually originally, to raise money. And they created that right away in, over their property, for the land they were selling, because they were getting in trouble financially.
I'm just thinking legally, having gone through. Mr. Calcutt and I have experienced recently some concerns over who owns a lot regarding town roads.
Do we know if they'd be willing to give us an easement to use that? It is possible, under state law, to do work on unaccepted roads and have a private property owner petition it, and you can budget a certain amount to spend on it. I'm not saying we want to do all that, I'm just saying it's possible. But I think we at least want to have some right to use it that's defined.
Maybe this is an issue that I think you will inherit, so I'll leave it to your discretion. But I think, Blythe, you probably are the one that can work this out for us as to what the best way is to resolve it.
Barbara, maybe you and I can meet separately, and we can talk about it a little more, and I can find out more about the property owner and what might be possible.
As I said, it was just an open issue in my mind.
Sure.
And I wanted, I felt, you know, it should be nailed down.
Generally, towns are not allowed to perform work on private property?
Right.
So we want to figure out what is the vehicle by which, no pun intended, we could have the right to do that?
Right.
And be able to spend some amount of town resources to achieve what you're hoping?
I don't care. As I said, I just thought, well, there was something that needed to be clarified.
Oh, it does, Barbara, thank you. Thanks for bringing it up. And I remember Jack talking about this. I just don't remember there being a resolution that was locked down. That's all. And we, you know, all good deeds sometimes don't go as we expect. And I just want to be sure.
All right.
I will follow up.
Great, good, thank you.
All right, the second issue pertains to property over in Campbell Street that the town acquired recently after Mr. Nichols passed away and his son settled his estate. The son decided to donate to the town, I think, or sell to the town for a dollar, I forget which he did. But anyway, the town acquired what I call the old mill site on Campbell Street, which is opposite the Silas Fails or the Awad property. All right, that's actually the site where the blast furnace was for the foundry. There are two maps in this packet. There's a first map is of the entire Carrigan Mill property that was seized by the town for taxes in the 1930s. And I've yellowed in the area that represents the mill property. All right, the second one is a plot plan for a deed between the Nichols and Mr. Nelson. And Nichols had acquired, the property was, the mill property was sold by the town for taxes to the Conroy's. The Conroy's owed it for many, many years. And when they passed away, their daughter sold it to Mr. Nichols. And Mr. Nichols then took possession of the property, the house, the house lot, and the mill lot. And then, in 1961, Mr. Nelson wanted the little garage that's down there on Campbell Street to use as a repair shop. And so, he approached Mr. Nichols, and they struck an agreement. And the second map you have shows the mill site as it was divided. And Nichols kept the yellow portion and sold the portion up by the garage near the river to Mr. Nelson. Both of them assuming that the land underneath went with the building, which wasn't true, because it was actually sitting partially on leased land, which the Nichols didn't own. But they didn't do a good title search, so they didn't know that. Anywho, what I'm looking for is to, this yellow area is what Nichols' son turned over to the town in Norfolk after his father passed away. And I'm asking that this piece of property now be incorporated into the Fails Park. We want to use it as a site for the new location or relocation of the plaque, the panel that was vandalized that we're replacing.
The one off of, the one that was at the entrance of the park, was it?
Yeah, by the arch bridge. We want to move it out onto Campbell Street where it's a visible site and...
I didn't realize that got vandalized.
You didn't realize it was vandalized?
No.
Well, it was vandalized, let's see, 2018, and Jack scraped up the money, and we've had a new panel, reproduction, the panel made. The DPW is holding it, and we hope to put it in the ground this year.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Well, the problem was that the site...
It's an out-of-site area.
It was an out-of-site area, and evidently, it became a gathering spot.
It's up on the hill, it's up off, a little bit off of the road, so it's easy...
A little bit off the road, even behind the bridge on an unused, you know, the Highland Lake, Campbell Street sector, there is not highly traveled. So the kids evidently collected there, and then they started with throwing a few rocks at it, and then they got really ambitious and evidently brought some tools and figured out a way to carve a hole in it, which of course, cut into the imprint and destroyed the panel. So I went to Jack, and anyway, we worked it out, and he was able to scrape up the 600-some dollars we needed to replace it. And I had the company in Pennsylvania reproduce it, and it's been shipped and it's sitting up in DPW waiting to be put back in the ground.
So, when, you see, George passed away probably five, six years ago?
Approximately.
Yeah. Is that when his son donated the land?
Shortly thereafter, when he was settling the positive estate, I think the following year, the year after Mr. Nichols passed.
And if he sold it for a dollar or he gifted it, we would have had to accept it.
I think it was for a dollar, I think he sold it to the town.
And we would have had to accept it, so there's a record somewhere on that.
Yeah, it would have been on the record. It is town property now.
Okay, then we did vote it at some point.
So we could put the panel on there anyway. But I think it would be more significant to make it part of the park, because actually, the panel addresses the foundry in 1825, and the foundry was located there. And that specific area of the mill site was right where the blast furnace was. So it makes it a very appropriate spot in which to...
Yeah, it does.
To put it, as well as being out in sight on a travel road with a house right across the street, which would minimize the amount of children or young boys gathering there and having drinking parties, et cetera, and working on the panel.
Blythe, do you know, in your experience, if the town owns a piece of property that is budding another piece of property that it owns, is there any reason why that can't be incorporated into one parcel? Because Highland Lake is open space, or is it conservation?
It's open space.
It's open space.
Off the top of my head, I don't see a reason why I couldn't, but I would want to check with counsel.
I don't either, but I don't know. Do you, have you?
I'll check with Rich and with Dave DeLuca.
Because it would make sense. I mean, it's not, it can't be used for anything else, so... Okay. So we'll look into it.
All right, and the third and last...
Oh, one more, okay.
Mr. Plomo helped me with this. And we took the conservation rules and regulations for their properties, and we made a few minor adjustments, so it would be applicable to Fails Park. And we came up with rules and regulations for use of the historic property at Fails Park. And then, basically, it sets up the opening and shutting up at sunrise, sunset, no motor vehicles, no motorized watercraft. Many of these are things that are directly in the, if you compare this with the conservation rules, they're directly, the fishing is allowed in season with a proper license, hunting's not allowed. The facing of ill use of the structures, fence signs, trees, et cetera, is forbidden.
Is the land posted?
And we would post this, yeah. Plus, I felt that it would also give the police department some authority of enforcement. Because if you think in terms of the condos that are currently being erected around the center of town, we have a lot of young people that are going to be there looking for an afternoon's recreation on a weekend. And Fails Park is very accessible and very close. They can walk through the woods and get there.
That it is.
So basically, the usage of this park, I think, in the future, is going to increase. And I want to protect the park from misuse. And no open fires, no overnight camping. And then, of course, the provincial, the invasive species that we're dealing with by boats.
Bless you.
And the town in Norfolk not liable for injuries, et cetera.
Barbara, I was just asking a question. Chuck, do you know? I mean, I know recreation establishes their own rules around uses of property and land and things of that nature. Wouldn't historical have the same right?
That I don't know. Conservation has specific rules to keep people out of it.
I just, I don't know who has the authority to...
No, no.
I think I now have three items to look into. I know I have three items to look into for Barbara.
I know, that's why I'm here. That's why I made the list, because I wanted some answers, because I think they're just dangling there, waiting for something to happen. And I don't want it to be something negative.
Highland Park is open space, Fails Park is open space too. Sadidus is open space. I don't know what our rules are around open space. We've never been asked that question.
I mean, I know what the rules are before we get to the point where we hand it off after it's been transgressed over, but I don't know what the long-term management looks like in terms of who would be setting regulations for it at the planning board or...
That's another good question. I mean, we're very good at establishing the front end. We're not very good at following you in the back end.
Let's take a little time to look into it and come back. And we'll put it on the agenda when we're ready.
All right, I'm here, may I bother you for one more thing?
Of course.
We're trying to work out this arrangement to get equipment in here to harvest these weeds.
Yep.
And I've come up with a proposal, but I need to know if it's doable. So I've written it all out for you to look over, and I ask your judgment as to whether we can do this or not.
Well, I know that, and Kevin, correct me, I believe I saw something from Bob McGee on this within the last week.
Correct.
This is really in the hands of, I think you, would you agree? This is in the hands of Bob McGee. He is talking with other towns and trying to figure out the best way to approach this.
Yes, I'm working with him.
So I'm hesitant, I think, you, would you, I'm hesitant to pass any judgments without Mr. McGee being involved in that decision.
I wholeheartedly agree, yeah.
That isn't what I'm asking you. I'm asking you, is it possible for us to do this?
This deal?
Yes.
Again, I would have to defer to Bob McGee. It's in his budget, Barbara. I mean, you're looking at, if I'm looking at this...
We're using, we went to the town meeting, fall town meeting in December.
Right, and we approved...
We got 25.
We approved the money to clean it.
All right.
Right.
And that was for, the amount we arrived at was the amount that amount would pay for, contracting with Meritrac to rent their equipment with operator for five days. All right, I'm proposing, instead of doing that, take that $20,500 and put it into a municipal lease over a five-year period, where we would then use it, use the 25 to pay the first installment, the first year, and then pay subsequent installments by doing as Bob has requested, finding neighboring towns that want to rent our equipment and pay us, that will raise the necessary revenue to meet the payments for the other four years. This way, the town would acquire, use the property, acquire the property, and all it would essentially cost is the interest.
It would likely take an inter-municipal agreement with those other towns to agree to pay us for that, so that we cover those costs, except for the interest?
But the way the municipal lease is written, if we contract with them to lease that equipment for this season, and we can't raise the money next season, the lease terminates, and that's it. There's no penalties, no debts, we just, it's dead.
Do our bylaws allow us to go for a lease of a period of this length? Sometimes those are limited.
We have done leases for five years.
Okay.
Yes.
I haven't had a chance to read the bylaws in depth on that?
We have, we've leased, the ambulance was a five-year lease. We have leased equipment in the past for five years. Nothing over five, though.
Okay. So are you still saying that if Mr. McGee agrees to this, then basically, we can proceed?
Well, I think, I would suggest we want to look at the warrant language and the motion that was passed. It was said that we could spend it on a specific purpose if we go out and then do a lease, and that wasn't what the money was set aside for? I think that would be a concern. I'd want to run it past town council and make sure that changing the terms what seems quite favorable, we need to make sure legally...
There again, with the transition we've made with Mr. Hathaway leaving, some things were kind of left up in the air to me. And I had been, we had requested, and Mr. Hathaway had assured us he was, had taken care of the fact, that the warrant article would request that it be, the $20,500 would be rent slash lease.
Okay. I'm on my first day, so...
I know, I know.
So let's take a little time to just go through those details.
That's why I'm asking these questions, because I'm not sure, and I don't know, can we do this or not? And that's why I'm asking you to find out.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a little bit of discovery to do.
Yeah, and it's a very reasonable request, Barbara, but we can't answer the question without doing some research.
Because I think if it works, it's an ideal solution, because, you know, it's no risk to the town, it gets the job done, we get the equipment, we get to use it, we help our neighboring town. It does everything I want to do. And basically, the only real cost, the bottom line, is the interest on the loan, or the lease.
So give me a couple days or weeks to...
I can ask for no more.
And you and I will get together, we'll figure it out.
Right. Anytime you want. I free most weeks out of the appointments on, except Tuesdays. Tuesdays, I'm tied up.
Barbara, thank you, as always.
Well, try to do my homework.
You do. That's the problem, Barbara, you do too much homework, and you're so far ahead of us that it takes us too long to catch up. Thank you, Barbara.
Now you know how my students felt.
I'm sorry?
Now you know how my students felt. Yes, thank you very, very much. No, those aren't, those aren't they?
I don't know the answer to those questions.
They're both the same project.
The warrant article was broad, but I, and I know Bob has not had a lot of luck in getting the other towns, just according to his email. He's not had a lot of luck with the other towns wanting to process it.
I'm going to try and get to them tomorrow.
Find out. I've never heard of a lease that if you didn't make the second payment...
That's typical.
Where's the other one?
Because you could only guarantee the year's funding that you...
Well, I know you're going to appropriate it on your basis.
From Jeff, yep.
Okay. That wasn't the case with the ambulance.
Yes, please return them to the library.
But we appropriated the full amount.
I'm looking for the...
Under the warrant article. Thanks, $260,000. We appropriated that under the warrant article and then paid for it over a five-year lease.
It was a cemetery project, cleaning the stones.
You're right, we did appropriate the whole amount. Voted the whole amount, you're correct.
Bryce Simmons. Wrong boy, wrong project.
Barbara, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we lacked to bring you into our usual tradition, my apologies. But, Madam Town Administrator, would you be gracious enough to read the agenda?
Of course.
And you can skip the seven o'clock part.
Please consider approving a request from the Garden Club of Norfolk to use the Rose Garden area of Town Hill on Saturday, June 15, 2019, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Please consider approving a request from the Federated Church to use Town Hill on Easter Sunday, April 21, 2019, for their annual sunrise service from 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. Please consider approving and signing the police union contract. Please consider approving and assigning the Norfolk Landing Open Space Quit Claim deed. Please reconsider approving the fire chief contract. Please consider authorizing and signing the Town of Norfolk Other Post-Employment Benefits or OPEB Trust Agreement. The next item we're going to ask you to table, which was to please consider voting to accept the Tilwin Circle. We'll hold that off to perhaps the next meeting. Please consider approving the Norfolk Baseball Association and Norfolk Softball Association's opening day parade to be held on April 27, 2019, at 10:30 a.m. And there are warrants that I believe you have seen that need to be executed. And we've already taken care of the discussion item.
Thank you very much. Let's start down the list. Mr. Calcutt, sir?
I move to approve a request from the Garden Club of Norfolk to use the Rose Garden area of Town Hill on Saturday, June 15, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
I will second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On the next item, I am a member of the Federated Church, and I have always recused myself from those votes, even though I think this is one that I have no financial interest in having a sunrise service. So I'm not uncomfortable, but I do want to disclose that I do attend the church, but I don't think that this one presents any conflict whatsoever. So if you concur, I will vote on this.
In that case, I move to approve the request from the Federated Church to use Town Hill on Easter Sunday, April 21, 2019, for their annual sunrise service from 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please consider approving and signing the police union contract. I believe that we are in concurrence on this.
We are.
And so do I have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we will sign it this evening. And I want to thank you, Chief, for all the hard work that you contributed to this. You've given undue credit to the wrong parties, you've played an instrumental role in this, so thank you for that. Please consider approving and signing the Norfolk Landing Open Space Quit Claim deed.
Just want to make sure there's nothing else to that.
I don't think there is, not that I remember when I read through it. A lot of paper in this one. Let's just take a second, I don't, I read this so long ago.
The motion doesn't have to cite the specific language surrounding the partial description, right?
I would not think so.
Thank you.
I would just say as included in your packet.
Gotcha.
Thank you. We had one of those before, didn't we?
We did, so...
I mean, you could, but we'll be here for an extra ten minutes.
We already run down that road before.
I think you were here for an hour and a half just reading it.
All right, in that case, I move to approve the Norfolk Landing Open Space Quit Claim deed as listed in our packet.
I will second, any further discussion?
Nope.
Nope, done here, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, these are signing copies, or do we have other ones?
We have, we'll do that at the end if that's okay.
Very good.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Please reconsider approving the fire chief contract. Just as a way of background, our fire chief, Cole Bushnell, came to one of our selectmen's meetings, much to our surprise, and handed in his resignation as of June thirtieth, I believe, which is a year early on his contract, he did so for personal reasons. There had been some ongoing discussions back and forth as to whether he wanted to rethink that or not rethink that, and in the interim, we had decided that the right direction, so if you jump in if I stray here, was that we would appoint Peter Petrusik, who is the deputy chief, as the new fire chief effective July first, on a three-year contract. And I think that's where we are, at this particular point in time, so we had voted that, but we were, I'll be honest and direct on it, we were challenged as to whether or not that needed to be a posted position. The bylaw does not state that the, we have a strong chief position, and the bylaw does not address the strong chief position. So, we posted it anyway, went through the process to make sure that there were no questions or issues associated with that. That has been done, it has passed the time, and we are now in a position to reaffirm that vote on Peter Petrusik, so do I have a motion?
Absolutely, so moved.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Peter, we thank you for stepping forward, and Chief Bushnell, if you are listening, we are very grateful for your fifteen years of service, and I know you're going to be returning to your home state of Connecticut. Kevin will be deeply missing you, as you're the only Yankee fan I think we have in the town. No, no.
Sorry.
That wasn't one of the interview questions, however, Cole, was it?
Thank goodness.
But you will be missed, Chief, and you have, I'll just take a brief moment, because I had the pleasure of working with Cole for fifteen years. When Cole took over, we were an EMT town, we were literally a taxi service to a hospital, and Cole, through his hard efforts and work, transformed us into a paramedic facility that, quite frankly, has saved a number of lives in our community, so our chief, Chuck Stone is here as well, so between our public safety officials, fire and police, not only is our town a very safe town, but it's a town where we keep people alive. And we are grateful to both Chief Stone and to Chief Cole Bushnell for all of the hard work and diligence that they've had in building that capability, and the community is a safer place because of that. So, we are always in gratitude to you, Chief, to both chiefs, thank you both.
Absolutely, thank you.
We are fortunate to have you. And you will be missed, Cole, we only have one Yankee fan now to rank on, but that just means we'll double up.
Oh, fantastic.
Right now, we're not looking too good on that one, are we?
I'm not going to start throwing the scoreboards out just yet, but we'll get there.
Well, neither one of us seem to be able to hit or pitch this year, so what can I say? We're only, what, eighteen games behind, and it's only early, or something like that, it's been a tough start. Okay. Please consider authorizing and signing the Town of Norfolk Other Post-Employment Benefits, better known as OPEB, and I know you're a big fan of this. Do I have a motion?
Could we get a little bit of background, maybe, I don't know who the best person to speak to is now?
Yep, please go ahead, because I know this is one of your pets.
So, OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits in Massachusetts refers to retiree health benefits, which the town accepted, I'm not sure what year that accepted that section of law, but it allows for all retirees who meet the obligations, years of service and age requirements to have a pension, may elect to have health insurance through the town as a retiree through the rest of their life and that of their spouse. I believe, and Scott can nod up and down, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, the town pays fifty percent of the cost?
Correct, for retirees.
Yes, for retirees.
Yep.
And so, I'm guessing that right now, any retirees who are, have those benefits, are providing them now, are being covered in the operating budget, is that correct? But that will continue to grow over time, as, let's take Chief Bushnell retiring. He retires and someone comes and takes the job in his place, now you have, you're carrying the retiree at a much lesser cost as you would a regular employee, but then you also have the other. And so, as people retire, that obligation grows, and because it goes for the rest of their life, and you don't know how long they're going to live, it is a cost that the town is obligated to, and you cannot change the, you can't go back and undo the law and say you don't want to cover it anymore. Once you've made that vote, you can't rescind it, the town meeting can't do that. So, at some point, for most communities, it becomes unsustainable to budget it in the operating budget. And so, the trust has been a way that Mass Law has established to allow you to have a separate vehicle with a separate group of trustees, in this case, I think it's the chairman of the board, the treasurer, the finance director, the town administrator, and I think the H.R. director are the administrators, and they can, once you start to put money into the trust, they will invest it and will manage it to be able to meet those obligations. And one thing we'll have to talk about in the future is, how are we going to get to the number that we need to meet to be able to take care of that over time? I would guess it's at least several million dollars, I don't know the number off the top of my head, yet. There's probably, there's been an actuarial study done. To this point, it's not required that we fund it, but I think in the future, it, there will be legislation that will require, make that change. Right now, I think we're trying to put, we'll try to put money into it as we can afford it in town budgets. But this is a good first step to being prepared for that.
Right. Great, thank you.
Yeah, we are late in doing this.
Most communities are, I think the only one that probably isn't is a town I just left, and they did basically a debt exclusion to pre-fund it, because if you could do that, and it can start to be invested and grow, and grow, then it's closer to having you be able to fully fund it, because at some point, it will, you'll reach a tipping point where it just becomes unsustainable, unless there's legislation passed in Boston to start to, you know, reduce that benefit for perhaps future retirees.
Yeah, we should have done this sooner. It's a good thing to do, we have a number of what I would call unfunded obligations that just float around town, but most of them are annual events, whether they be retirement or lump sum payments or things of that nature. This one is sustained, this one never ends, and it can be big money over time, and it's a budgeted item. And it just eats, it should, like Norfolk County Retirement System, just continually grows and grows and takes a bigger chunky for operating budget. This one is, it's, and we have an aging population in our town government.
Every community does, I mean, generally, workers in municipal world are on the older side, and they tend, because there's still a defined benefit pension and there's this retirement benefit, they tend to stay, because...
As they should.
You know, and that's valuable for the years of service and the knowledge that they bring to the job. The flip side is, we need to be prepared for that obligation, so we'll have to talk in the coming years about how we start to put money into it, or what measures we need to take to be able to be prepared for it. Especially if we can financially before an obligation is thrust upon us and saying, you must start to put X aside. That's when it'll get really hard.
I mean, I would suggest that, because there will be a new board, that you would consider looking at when our free cash, we've been making regular deposits into our stabilization fund. Right now, that fund is at a point where we're well entrenched in our bond rating, that we don't have any, we don't have to look, our debt ratio is in good hands. S&amp;P will have no issue in maintaining our bond rating with our current reserves. You know, might that be a place that I would suggest you might take a look to see if you can put a couple hundred thousand dollars every year out of free cash into that fund, into that trust.
It would make sense, I mean, right now, it's not a, S&amp;P and Moody's don't put a big value on it, but they will in the future, so...
They will in time, but we don't need it to reinforce our bond rating at this point, that's my point.
I agree with you.
We don't need to build up that two million right now, we're in good shape there.
You've done a good job on that to this point, and this will be the next frontier, if you will, to tackle.
For you and the new board to consider.
Absolutely.
Thank you for, you did a much better job than I would, so...
All of that being said, I move to authorize the Town of Norfolk OPEB trust.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Baseball.
Baseball. And softball.
And softball.
Be careful about that.
Do have to be careful about that. I move to approve the Norfolk Baseball Association and Norfolk Softball Association's opening day parade on April twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, at ten-thirty a.m.
Will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very nice tradition, nice to, nice way to kick off the year, as Bobby would say, it's Mayberry. Warrants, I believe you have the privilege on all of these.
All me, that's right.
You got them all.
That's right.
Go for it.
All right, I move to approve the warrant dated four-nine-nineteen in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, and the warrant dated four-nine-nineteen in the amount of three-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I will second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business? We have another meeting scheduled for April thirtieth, and right now, it's a pretty light agenda. And we have a meeting scheduled for May second, right, do I have the right date now, it's not the third, which is Thursday, which is a seven o'clock meeting to, it's a public forum for anyone to come in and talk about the warrant and the budget, and try to answer any questions that they may have before town meeting. Would you be agreeable to combining those into one meeting?
I absolutely would.
And we will then cancel the April thirtieth meeting, we will start the regular meeting at seven, we'll do the, and whatever business we have that will be posted, we will conduct at the conclusion of the public session.
Okay, so do it after, not later?
After, right, Kevin has a little, it's not an easy evening for him to make early, so we'll do that.
So, I'm going to have to guess on time, because I don't know how long your presentation will go.
Last year, it went about an hour and a half to two hours.
I was going to say two hours, yeah.
Okay, so do you want me to post your meeting at eight-thirty, and if you start later, that's okay?
Sure, well, you got to post it earlier than later, we can always start late, we can't start early.
Exactly, so I'll post it at eight-thirty.
Unagreeable? And I don't think we'll have a lot on the agenda, but we may. You know, if the running-gun folks choose to come back that evening, we can meet down at eight-thirty.
Okay, I can make that change tomorrow.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, any other business?
I would probably just want to throw one more note of appreciation out there to our interim town administrator.
I would agree, thank you, well said.
Did an incredible job, really saved us, I would say. A lot of the things that were coming to light as we moved into the spring were a little overwhelming for a board of selectmen to handle, and he did a fantastic job of stepping in.
I concur completely, thank you for reminding us both to say thank you to Todd. Todd Lindmark is our finance director, we asked him to step into that role when the search went out for a second time, and has ended up as fortunate as it has, and he did do a great job. He provided the guidance and steadied the ship considerably, because a part-time selectman can't do that.
He's on a well-deserved vacation this week, though I did run into him at the deli.
He's on spring break, he's on spring break, yeah. So, I know, and he's going to enjoy it as well, so thank you, I concur. So, I just have one last piece of business. Hope, whoops, sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Don't tell me. Oh, my goodness. Well, I may not have one last piece of business, I thought I did. I do. Thank you. Before we adjourn, I just would like to make, you'll have to tolerate me on this one if you don't mind, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. This most likely will be my last selectmen's meeting in serving the town, whereas the only meeting we have left now is May second, and that's more of an open forum, and not really appropriate for me to say thank you, so I'm going to take a moment this evening to do that. Because as I've said from the very beginning, I've always considered it a privilege to serve the citizens of Norfolk. I say that with all sincerity. And I want to thank the citizens for their support and their kind words over the many years. It's been very meaningful to me and very helpful in working through what sometimes are difficult days, so I've been grateful for that. The last fifteen years have been indeed been a journey. I was asked by someone, a friend of mine in town the other day over a cup of coffee, about if I'd been reflecting on leaving the board and what I thought about that, and actually, the answer was quite easy for me. My goal was, and I hope, that when I left the board, that I left the town in a better place than when I got on the board. That was my hope. I am not going to be the judge of that, you, the citizens, will be the judge of that, and that judgment is still to come. But if that is what I hope has taken place, then I feel good about my time on the board. I do want to say that we're in a very difficult time. People tend to be very entrenched in their views in this day and age, and sometimes, we're not willing to listen to alternative perspectives, and I think that's indeed unfortunate. It seems to be sort of a national illness that we have right now. But I think it's important for people to understand that people such as I and Kevin, my associate on the board, and people that work on all of these boards are volunteers. We're not politicians, we're citizens, we live here. We're not Republicans or Democrats, we're not left or right in our views. We're just citizens who volunteer our time and talent to try and help to make the town a better place, and we do it without an agenda. And I hope that as we move forward, that we can begin to face these challenges more as a community rather than as separate parties, and work together. We're a lot better when we work together. We should continue to push for change, that's a good thing, change is a constant. I was told once by my boss that change is a constant, the only variable is the velocity. And I think the velocity has picked up in the last few years, and we have to deal with that, it's the time. But I do know that it always helps when we are willing to listen to alternative points of view and to do so with respect, and to do so with an understanding that there are different views on issues, and that we need to try and seek out some common ground. When Norfolk works together, we're much better, we can get a lot more done. When we're divisive, it's very difficult to get things done. And as a community, when, we're stronger when we raise each other up rather than tearing each other down, we're better for that. And I hope we can continue to do that, and I've found Norfolk to be very much that way. I've had the pleasure of working with some very talented people, both employees and volunteers, and I am very, very grateful for that opportunity, we have a lot of talented folks in this community. Our town hall staff, they work very hard to maintain the inner workings of this community, and they do it without any fanfare or recognition, people really don't know what they do here. Our police, our fires, I've mentioned earlier, these professionals take great pride in keeping our town safe and healthy, and we're very proud of them as well. Our DPW department gets more work done with less revenue and less resources than any department... department probably in the state of Massachusetts, they do wonderful things. Our recreation department, library, senior center, they're all there exclusively to serve the public. They have no other reason for being there. They're there to support our community. Our financials are in good shape, I think we leave those in good shape. They're sound, our audits are good, our reserves are at the highest of all time. After a 12-year effort, we finally have a new police station, long overdue, and we're proud of that. We've also opened a new school in the last five years, replacing the old Freeman Centennial facility. We're going to be going operational with our new regional dispatch center, 911 dispatch center, which will go active for Norfolk on May 6. I think I have the right date, Chief, do I not? This is a tremendous facility, and will provide great support to the community. It creates redundancies that we've never had, and it creates capabilities that will serve our towns more efficiently and make our people safer. And it took years and years to work through these agreements, and I'm very proud of the towns that have supported this and making us work together. Yet, we're not done. We continue to face challenges with our infrastructure, we have a new fire station to complete, the schools continue to face increasing enrollments, and the police and fire and DPW always have capital needs for vehicles and equipment. Communities need to continue to grow, or they'll stagnate. I know growth is an uncomfortable thing for people, and, you know, it challenges us in many ways, but if we don't have growth, we stagnate, we don't continue to develop as a town. Our challenge is how to manage that, and how to manage that growth, and to maintain the qualities of life that we all hold very dear here in this community. That is our challenge, and it will be the challenge of the new board, to how to work that through. And we're going to need to plan this well, and we're going to have to think through all of the repercussions of that, especially in infrastructure. But we need to look at the community holistically. The largest segment of our population in Norfolk right now is over 65. That is the largest, fastest-growing segment of our population. And in many ways, this is really a silent group, you know, they don't speak out very much. Many are on fixed incomes, and they struggle to maintain their homes. Affordable housing is a critical need in this town. It is a critical need. And we need to be sure that we're responsive to all of our citizens, not just the ones with the loudest voices. We need to work with everyone. After many years of searching, we finally have a new well that's gone online, this will allow the two wells that we have to rest and provide us greater capabilities and redundancies that has been much needed for years. But that search goes on, and that source, new sources will have to be found. Some of the most painful issues I've had to deal with on this board are disputes between neighbors. There are never a reasonable answer to these disputes, and there's always an angered party. But I believe then, and I do today, that on this board, it is our obligation to try and not to turn our back on issues, because it might be uncomfortable or politically inappropriate. That's our job, and we know going into it that we can't win, but I still believe that we do the right thing. My wife and I were traveling a few years ago to Hungary, and while we were on a tour, the guide, very intelligent woman, turned around and asked what I did. And I said that I was retired and that I was working in my community as a volunteer to try and work with the town. And she looked at me and she said, "Well, are you a politician or a statesman?" And it kind of caught me off guard, because it's a very profound statement, and I said, "Well, what's your definition of the two, and then maybe I can answer it?" She said, "Well, a politician thinks about the next election. A statesman thinks about the next generation." And I've never forgotten that. We need more statesmen. We definitely need more statesmen. So, again, I really sincerely want to thank the citizens of Norfolk. It has been a profound privilege to serve you. I've given you the best I got, I have considered it a privilege from day one. I know the reality of the position, and I know that it results in disagreements, it's the nature of the job, and I've always understood that, but I believe if I'm governed by those three basic principles that I've tried to follow over the last 15 years, is it legal? Does it serve the best interest of the town? And is it common sense? Does it make sense? Does it benefit everyone involved? And is it fair? And is it without bias? I've tried to follow that religiously in every decision I've made, and it's the best I can do. And finally, and my wife will kill me when she hears this, but I want to give a big thank you to my wife, Betty. Betty, who also volunteers on a number of boards in town, she has been supportive of my involvement in this from day one, and she has weathered a lot of tough evenings with me, because they're not always the pleasant of days, but she's been there for me in every instance, and she's been my counsel throughout that whole process, and she's always focused on doing what's right. She's given up our time to allow me to share my time, and I'm eternally grateful for that. She has been and is my strength, so I want to thank her. So, again, in closing, to the citizens, thank you for the opportunity to serve you, it's been a privilege. And with that, I'll bring this meeting to a close and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.